Uh, stands for the pledge of your evil.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the order roll call, carry on my right.
Counselperson, Richard.
Counselperson, Brian Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Eames.
Counselperson Jeremiah.
We're looking for approval of tonight's agenda and the additions from the staff.
We should be good to go.
Anybody over here got anything they want to add?
I'll make the motion approve.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as is. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Then we have approval of regular meeting minutes of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Any questions on that?
I'll make a move, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
The motion to approve the minutes, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. If there's no more question or discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Takes us to finance and budget. We have the accounts payable and the additional. And if you have any questions, we can ask Finance Director Carlo. Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
One second, yeah.
We have a second. No questions or further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Takes us into motions and general business. Tonight's, the first item on the motions and general business will be the first reading of the chicken on this. On April ninth, council meeting, a motion was passed three and two to move forward with the first reading of an ordinance to allow chickens within city limits. Attached, we will find the ordinance for a review and public comment. The ordinance was sent on Friday, grouped to share with others, so they have had time to review. It is suggested that the fee for the application be set at one hundred dollars, which would cover staff time for review of the application and inspections as needed. Now, for now, we're going to, we're going to close the regular meeting and I'll open the public hearing. Uh, do you want me to read the entire ordinance?
Uh, no, you don't need to.
This is the first read, so no action will be required, but we have some written.
Yes, so we're going to enter to record the three written email or the three emails that we gave, received today regarding the about where it has been.
Okay, uh, there'll be no action on, but, uh, as anticipated, the final reading of the ordinance will be held May twenty-eighth. Do you have anything you'd like to say? Could you please stand up, state your name and address for the record at the podium, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Juliette Empressie. I live at six oh eight Cent Avenue Northeast. I didn't have the chance to get to the library before it closed to print what I was going to say, so I'm reading in very small print on my phone, so I apologize if I don't do a good job there.
And if you want, when you're done, uh, tonight or whatever, you can still forward that to us.
Oh, okay.
We'll get it incorporated.
Oh, great. Do you want to send it to Cheryl?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, hello, City Council. Uh, first, I wanted to thank you for your time and consideration of our requests and comments. I had a chance to review the proposed ordinance and I wanted to make a few comments of some concerns I had with the ordinance. But before, before I share those concerns, I wanted briefly to share why I personally desire to own chickens and the perspective that I'm coming from in bringing forth my concerns. I was eighteen when I got Lyme disease. I'm not sure of your familiarity with the disease, but it is a bacteria that enters the blood commonly through a tick bite. If left untreated, is, it is a debilitating disease. I was on hardcore antibiotics for close to two years, took time off school to rest and focus on healing per my doctor's recommendations. It was a life-altering event for me. I ended up going to a doctor that mixed a holistic approach with the use of antibiotics since data up to that point had shown that that approach, um, had the best outcomes. The doctor recommended a complete overhaul on my diet and lifestyle. Per his recommendations, I began to feel much better and slowly was able to come off my antibiotics. Continuing to follow his advice, I began to feel even better than I did before I got Lyme disease. I have learned the power of healthy living. As a homemaker, I have made decisions of how to care for my husband and children that reflects this. Perhaps I took too much time to explain my personal history, however, I felt it important to explain the context of why helpful living for our family is a non-negotiable. If you don't already eat exclusively organic, I encourage you one week to buy exclusively organic groceries to see how much more you'll be spending for the same products. To help reduce those costs, I have stopped to do as much as I can myself. I have a large garden and I can and freeze produce for us to eat through the winter. I bake my own sourdough bread. I cook nearly every meal from scratch and I am constantly learning new skills to make things myself that allow me to spend less when I go to the grocery store. I and some others have spoken, uh, that I've spoken to in the community are not raising chickens as a hobby. I think owning chickens is a great hobby to have, but that is not the motivation of some of the community members that I've, um, that I've spoken to in, as we seek to revise or hope that the ordinance would be revised. Uh, requiring people to only have three chickens does not produce enough eggs to meet the needs of the average-sized household. I would like to suggest that six chickens per family is more reasonable for people with those goals. My second concern with the proposed ordinance is limiting people's ability to own chickens based on the opinion of their neighbors. I can say with certainty that enclosed chickens are far less inconvenient, noisy, and dangerous than dogs are. I could give examples of ways in which our neighbors have inconvenienced us, such as allowing their dog to repeatedly poop in our yard, dogs barking and lunging at my girls who are age two and four, neighbors having late-night parties, uh, my neighbor's extremely loud motorcycle that scares my girls. My husband and I don't complain about these things because we know that living in town means that we are close to our neighbors and with that comes occasional noise and inconvenience. With the ordinance unchanged in that regard, you are giving power to neighbors who provide an equal or potentially greater inconvenience to bar their neighbors from the, in my opinion, arguably small inconvenience of having a chicken coop some distance from their yard with the chickens being enclosed in that coop, of course. In the event that people do not care for their chickens in the manner prescribed and your ordinance has laid out consequences for those individuals, so my opinion, the recourse or the consequences are, um, are adequate. Um, I truly appreciate you listening to our concerns today and throughout this process of taking place. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you're feeling much better, too.
Thank you. Yes, me too.
Um, on your point of, uh, the neighbor part, we've got some written comments from chicken people. And actually, that's brought up by one, the same as you said, but it's brought up by another one that says, no, leave that in. That is a good part of it. So, uh, we're kind of up in the air for right now on that part of it, I guess, because we have people, I, I'm not going to disagree that you don't have to ask a neighbor about a dog. There are more than four of that. Uh, the one thing I will say is, uh, we're, 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 we're going into a whole new territory here of livestock. That's kind of different. Livestock in fall compared to domesticated animals, which cats and dogs are always committed to consider domesticated animals, which I, I realize they're not all domesticated as well. So, uh, on that point, uh, I'll take some consideration on both sides. That's going to take me a second here to decide on that, what I want to do. We've also uh, Brent here has something he'd like to discuss, I believe, about the ordinance.
I'd like to see, uh, if you have chickens that have a fence around your backyard, would be. I mean, um, I think that's what the, the people I came in, the chicken committee here, whatever you want to say, that presented this the first time, that was their suggestion and that's where I got it from. Um, I just think it'd benefit not only the homeowner, but the neighbors too, because that keeps out rodents, dogs, the neighbor dogs. I, this is just a benefit for everybody, I think.
Now, on that point, if you read through these here, there's also one that agrees with that. And, uh, but their reason for agreeing, you have to read in there is they want to allow their chickens to run free in the yard instead of being in the coop or the run. So, are you willing, if you make them fence it all, are you willing to let them run free in the yard then? I mean, that's another consideration we're being asked to do too. Just point out all the different things that you read through and what you're asking for. I mean, they, they kind of agreed with your fencing part, but they also said if we got to do that.
That was brought up right, that was brought up the first night they presented everything. That's kind of stuck with me, so.
No, I understand that, Brent. I asked you.
No, I don't. If, if they run, I mean, man, I.
Part of the reason to have a coop and a run is to keep them kind of enclosed too, you know, so they're not running through. Now, there's also, which I never thought of either, and I don't know how big a, uh, extra job that'd be, banning. When they get their license, you ban them. And then that way, if they get loose, it's like a dog license, you know whose bird it is, bird number three. I mean, that was just brought up, and I just wondered. I'm also looking at staff for some suggestions on this, or what do you think about some of this?
Yeah, I guess we feel we present, at least to this point, what we feel is a balanced ordinance that we can probably, um, you know, probably put care of for our visibility. Like you said, it's new territory for us. Whole new avenue of responsibility. Um, and then obviously, a first reading offers opportunities for these ideas. And then you have the ability to leave the draft as is, incorporate some of these ideas that have come in, or take some things out, um, uh, in any manner you may please.
And also, to your one point about six instead of three, there's a couple of chicken ones in here that say that's, three is actually the perfect number for in town. That's people that have had chickens when they weren't supposed to have chickens in their home. They're saying three is a decent number.
In regards to the bay, I mean, I don't know that that's something staff would be in favor too, because they would have to keep track of that. We're not going to go pick up chickens if they're running. We're not going to go do that. If somebody in the neighborhood finds one and then they have to call us and look up a number and stuff, and it's like, we need to be.
Well, that's my next question, what do we do with the loose birds?
I think if we allow them, we'd be responsible for them.
No, I don't, but what do we do with the loose birds? I'm just asking staff, what's your suggestion? Like loose dogs, we're trying to get out of the dog business too.
With cats, we don't go after. Um, dogs will only, unless it's some rare danger situation, uh, we make them be, um, corraled first before we even goes up, so. Um, chickens aren't going to be that much tougher.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. They're not the easiest to catch when they're out running around.
Rocky did it.
I could do it.
Rocky was training to play the Apollo Creed.
But I'm not going to do it on a daily basis.
That would be a disaster if we had chickens running around the city.
So, we had one on, uh, the other day asking for help. They lost their chickens. Everyone moves before we had the ordinance and stuff.
So, we could, if somebody repeatedly, if their chickens repeatedly got out, we could revoke their permit, right?
Yeah, that last section there, and it actually says it gives the city, uh, an immediate abatement opportunity. And that's probably the best way to correct the measure.
And you'd have to, I see that the way it's written, that it would be a permit renewed every two years. Wouldn't it be that same hundred-dollar fee to renew it? Or wouldn't it be less for a renewal?
Um, that's something you guys could decide. It'd probably be less. The first time, we have to spend staff hours going out and inspecting and stuff the second time. I guess we trust that they still have everything, the coop and everything.
Would that, uh, I guess I'll ask you, Cheryl, because you guys are the staff, but the, there was a good question here about, I got a two-year permit, my neighbor agrees to it, now I got a new neighbor and he don't like it. Do they give me?
So, I think the way we do that is, in year number two, yes, you still need to get their permission because that's how we're going to find out if the neighbors are, they're abiding by rules and stuff. Um, and then that way, we can capture any new neighbors that move in. If in the meantime, in those two years, if a neighbor happens to move out, um, they don't have to get the new neighbor's permission.
Okay, that's what I mean, third, second year of a two-year permit there.
Yeah.
What's the thing of four H that you talked about? Like, I don't know what four H is, but what, is that a normal thing that people raise chickens and they're going to get a new little chick and bring it, like, how many do they bring in the fair?
Oh, it's a very big thing. They bring full-sized chickens and there's many different breeds and they, they show them, they put them on a table and they, they judge them and it's, it's a huge thing at the county fair.
But the way she said it, if we didn't increase the number, she said even if you made an exception for four H or far, you know, people doing that, or even a limited time that they could have more than the three, you know, like, and then, so what, are they going to get rid of them after the fair though? I mean, that's.
Like a barbecue.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
I, I will say though, like, I'm, the things I think we should have the neighbors all agree. I also think that obviously no roosters, that's very important to me. Um, but I wasn't in favor of having chickens at all, so I really don't have a super strong, uh, I think this looks pretty good. Personally, I wouldn't be against allowing a little bit more than three, whether it's four or five, maybe. I think that's more than enough. Everybody I've talked to said that's way more than enough to feed their families' eggs. Um, so I don't mind that. I like the idea of the fence. I'd probably be more against letting chickens run free. I like the idea of them being in their coop and their run. I'm sure people are going to take it all for themselves in the home, but I, I don't have a super strong opinion on it, but things I've heard are pretty good. But I, I don't think we need to up it a lot as far as the number of chickens.
I'll tell you one that, that I do strongly agree with. I never thought of it, but it's a good one, is, uh, about if they are, if the property, we're already having trouble with some of these properties keeping them cleaned up and stuff. And they kind of want chickens, they're not going to get chickens. You, you know what I mean?
I would think their neighbors would say the whole too.
Well, yeah, their neighbors don't like the way it is now.
Right, that's what I mean, I don't think.
I don't know how you'd write that into the ordinance though.
If you can't clean up your yard, you can't have chickens. That's what I'm saying. Can't keep a tidy yard.
I know, but define tidy. I mean, we already have people personally let us do, um, yearly, every six months and they don't understand what's wrong with their property and it's, they're pretty bad.
Well, I'll go give them tidy lessons, I guess.
I don't know how you would.
Okay. Um, I, I haven't seen the worries. Is there any there about banning coops?
Abandon coops?
We're done with it. They should dispose of it, right?
I think it says in there, when you're done, you have to get rid of them, right? And here's a spot I think I remember reading that. One thing about the fence, uh, I was called a couple of weeks ago to somebody that was upset that their neighbor had chickens running loose in their yard. Uh, went up there, the chickens were very calm and came right up to me and were, but the neighbor's dogs, even the best trained dog, behaved dog, has a tendency to try to run after something, a rabbit or something type of, and then the dog sit and bark at them with the neighbor's hair because they roam around the fence and stuff. I'm not for or against either, right? Just something you keep in mind, because someone's going to feel guilty if their dog knows it kills the neighbor's chicken out of temptation. And they don't mean, that a lot of times, the dog is just playing, they don't even know.
So, I think on the number, um, it's easier to be more restrictive upfront and open it up later on than, than to allow too many and then realize you have to dial it back down the road. So, you're staying, stay with three?
I, I would, I would rather stay with three at least to begin with.
So, how are we handling the, the, uh, inspection or approval of the chicken coop and the chicken run? Are we going to physically have somebody go out there and look at it and say, this is good?
Tom, Tom and I will call there to inspect.
Jesus. Well, Josh, you're a chicken guy. Let's hear it.
Yep.
Well, I was going to just ask, like, do we know how many people would actually, would be in this process?
I can say that there's probably already a good half dozen that have chickens that should, that are violating the ordinance. And that's just what I know.
I'm sure they'll all go out and follow the ordinance, or else their staff won't follow, sorry.
So, I'd say a dozen or more.
Because it's, it's hard to just, like, know, like, what's going to happen. Like, we always say worst-case scenario, but I think, like Jeremiah said, with the, I mean, I wouldn't want six, but I think there's one suggestion of having four. I think that would be a good compromise. And I like Brent's idea of having, needing to have a fence around the property. Because if they do get out of the coop and the run, you want to have them contained at least in some way so they're not running around town.
How high a fence and what type are you placing? Any kind of fence?
No, I mean, I think that's be at least up four foot.
Four-foot chain.
Chain link or privacy, minimum. Not none of those little stake ones you get for your little dogs that run around.
Because in the ordinance, it says, like, the, the coop and run have to be concealed essentially, so you can't see it. Wait, is that, I run there, right?
Um, if I quickly, I can tell you, um, Byron allows five, Casson Wells six, Dodge Center six, Hayfield five, Fatt Field six, St. Charles three, Plankton four. That gives you an idea of, um, whether the communities are going.
Well, Josh, it's always best to look at the worst case and that way you're not near to disappointed.
But then you get too scared of all of it.
I'm scared of those. We're already trying to figure out what we're going to have to clean up tonight.
Would, would there be a time limit, like you said, for the families that you're aware of that already have chickens? Do they have, would we, if we enact the ordinance, would we say that they've got to have their permit within thirty days or are they going to get a ticket?
So, I have a list now that we've started, um, so I, we will personally send them letters right away that this is the ordinance and that they need to, to apply.
Can you remind them about the no ordinance for them? That they seem to can't follow that?
Yep.
You got your chicken handcuffs ready?
You are. You're going to, it's like, it's like people are putting up sheds without permits. They're putting up fences without permits. I mean, you're, you're, you're going to still have them that are going to not follow the ordinance even though we allow them. You're, you're always going to have that. It's unfortunately, the way it is, people would rather ask forgiveness than to do it the right way.
Well, any other public comments? We've got a written, was there any other oral called in?
No.
Anybody else in the audience or anything they'd like to add?
So, once, once the start is there, articles, then we will have that two weeks of, um, comments. And that's when people that are against it will be called. That's typically how it ends, happens with a ordinance after the first reading. That's kind of the first time the public is really going to see.
So, it looks like there might be a couple tweaks, or is everything pretty well in there the way we discussed it already?
Um, you have to tell me which one.
Thanks to Byron, it seems that that's.
Are you, everybody agrees on fencing the yard?
Well, why is it more for you? Yeah, so they feel like it should be here. Yeah, I guess the majority feels it.
I mean, it does say the area around the coop and run shall be screened with a solid fence or, or solid landscape buffer, so that means, means.
It's kind of what Josh.
Like maybe a ten-by-ten or a ten-by-twenty or whatever, you know, doesn't mean that whole yard.
Right, but it's also, yeah.
Because you're looking at the fencing being a secondary
Absolutely.
protection or.
Around the backyard, around the backyard from, uh,
Besides the coop, besides, yeah, besides the coop and or run requirements.
You think it needs to be on the property line?
But.
You think it needs to run.
Property line and property.
They're c- close enough to like. Yeah.
Or, but, but not only dogs and.
As long as it matters, everybody has, like, my neighbors don't have their whole property line fence. They only a portion of the yard. Except then one a portion of it for the dog and then another portion of it for the kids. I would say the majority needs to be, instead.
Like, yeah.
The backyard.
Because that's where they got to be anyways, in the backyard, if somebody has a backyard.
So, the other change would be the number of, what are you guys thinking? We say three in the ordinance right now. We've had discussion on more.
I'm through with it. It don't matter to me. I mean, I, I'd hate to, I don't think why we need to say, you have a guy here that's a chicken expert and he's sticking with three.
Well, you also heard from a young lady that said she'd like to have six. We've got some other ones in here that want, like Craig brought it up, for four H, they'd like to have a couple more for four H. So, anyhow, what do we want? Three, four, five, six, two? We don't got to be the same as anybody else. We can lay these new ground and call it two. They'd be bugs.
Do the chicken coops go by, when you, chicken coops get larger, minimum requirements get larger, the more chickens you have?
Yeah, each chicken's got to have a certain certain space. Just like if you and me were in the same room and we want to be in the same testing box. So, what do you think, guys, for number? Are we going to change it or are we going to leave it?
I think four is a good number.
Need one for four?
I can.
Need one for four?
I can say a three, don't matter.
Three, Craig?
I already said I don't care. No more than five total. So, I just want a four and I want a three. Probably one, I don't know.
They gained one.
Thank you. And then how about the other request of neighborhood, neighbors' permission?
I've heard from a lot of people, not a lot of people, of the people that have talked to me about chickens, which is not everybody that I hang out with, I can tell you that, but they, I, I've heard even from a mayor in another town saying, make sure you have that on there, because they've run into issues. So, I, I would be in favor of having the neighbors agree. And I think it forces people to maybe try to allow their neighbors to stay at home.
That's not going to know if the neighbors don't take care of what they have. I mean, the neighbors aren't going to sign off on it.
Great. So, you say neighbors, neighbors, Josh, neighbors, and that stays the same. Otherwise, you guys like the way the ordinance was presented, those?
It's pretty good.
Have you seen a copy of the ordinance?
I, yes, an online copy was sent to me.
Good start, replace, Neil. All right. Justin, get ready to catch chickens, buddy.
I don't know what we're going to do with them. It'll be the same thing as cats, is we won't let them.
I don't, I agree. I, I, I get it.
The dogs are going to lock them.
Because I don't, I don't know what the, the city Rochester does. And I don't, I've never heard, uh, the buyer deputy or the owner deputy complaining about it. I don't know.
I've never seen chickens running around in Rochester, so.
I haven't either, but I've dealt with other animals, like goats and things that are running around. We just deal with that with dogs, so. But I don't know what they'll do and.
We've got chickens several times over the year ago. Really?
Yeah.
We've gotten eagle. It sounds like there's plenty of predators out there.
Beak ah.
Yeah.
Plenty of dogs are out on that leash, I think they'll take care of it.
And that might be an issue too, is if, like you said, dogs go into other people's yards and, and kill their chickens. Obviously, it's a civil dispute. It won't have any.
I, I tend to agree with that. That's why you'd be, it would be in your favor to build a fence, right?
That's right.
Keep other things out as much as it would be to keep things out.
Can I ask one question? The fence, so we're going to fence the yard four foot? Or is it a minimum four foot?
Is there an actual, maybe like a sixteen-foot fence?
Can chain link, chain link or privacy, fine?
Majority is just.
Want to say, Cheryl?
Probably our normal fence rules, otherwise.
But chain link or, or privacy, okay?
Or privacy. Yeah, I don't want those little state things that people put their little dogs in.
A, a private fence.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, she's been helpful. There you go.
I just want to ask a clarifying question about the fence, if it's okay. Um, don't you need your neighbor's approval for a fence as well as?
Always with your banana and the, probably.
On the property line.
Otherwise, you don't.
Oh.
So, you can still follow our normal fence rules, so if you want to put the fence in, what, six inches or?
Oh.
More, you have that ability on your own.
But if you want to run the property line, the neighbor sign off on it.
Got you, okay. I had a one other question that someone was asking about. So, someone that is on a corner lot, she didn't see anything about specifically if that would be allowed. But is a corner lot that has no technical backyard, is that still allowable? Or does it?
It can't be in the right way. Very true.
So, are you talking about the written permission? So, you, so a typical yard, you're going to need three people to sign off for neighbors. And a corner lot would only require two because you have the sites, the street side, and the street side you wouldn't need.
Okay.
You're not going to.
And you can put a fence on that side, you've just got to be off the right way.
Yeah.
With the fence.
Okay.
And that's more restrictive.
I would need seven people.
I would need seven people's approval to put it on my property, seven.
I have seven, I've touched my fence.
You're, you're gonna have lots where they're split in the back, so you could have lots, you have four neighbors that you need to get, for anyone that touches.
I would have to get seven.
Correct, correct, I'd have seven.
Seriously, seven, that all share fence, but I'm not getting chickens, that's.
That's a lot.
It's a lot of residents.
All right, if we have no other questions from the public or no other comments from the table, I'm gonna close the public hearing and go back to the regular meeting. Back to the regular meeting, now there'll be no action tonight on this. You'll shut up in a couple of weeks and be up.
So we'll draft these revisions into another, or second draft too. You still have the ability to adjust that if you want, when we get to the second reading presentation, so.
Great, perfect, thank you very much.
Yeah, the second meeting will not be a public hearing, so if you could, probably get a copy, so that they, but. You won't be able to speak at that point, you'll need to let us know at a time, so.
Only you all will be able to amend it at that point.
Right, okay. So thanks for coming in there.
Thank you.
All right. Off like a block of chickens. Next, under motions, general business, is Public Works, capital improvement project, purchase freightliner plow truck. For capital equipment plan, council has budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand for twenty twenty four for the purchase of the tandem axle dump plow truck. Dave Seabird's price of truck and accessories, equipment from Universal Truck. The government purchasing contract was used as we did on the last truck that we purchased in twenty twenty one. We did check with Allstate Peterbilt and received a quote below state bid for a hundred and forty eight, five sixty five. Once the new truck is purchased and received, we will be selling our two thousand nine international tandem with live box truck, uh, public surplus auction, estimated value of around fifty thousand. So here you go, is what the bids were, and with the equipment listed below, the purchase price with warranty extended is a total of two hundred and sixty six thousand, sixty nine dollars, eighty four cents, plus tax. So Councilax requested us to approve or deny the purchase of the twenty twenty five freightliner, one fourteen S D, from Dave Seabird's truck and listed equipment from Universal Truck Equipment. Oh, excuse me, without the extended warranty, for a total of two six six, zero six nine, eighty four cents.
With that, we do not pay taxes, I believe, on the equipment, it would only be on the truck.
Questions for our Public Works Director? Comments?
Do we have the extra twenty grand somewhere that we can throw at it, over the two fifty that we already have put away?
We'll be selling that truck, so we'll make it acknowledge.
Let's figure it out.
Is this an automatic, you get automatics?
Yeah.
I'm sure they do, but everything's automatic anymore.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, they requested.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion? Jeremiah or Josh? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If that carries. That'll take us, the next one is approval of lifeguards and concession workers for the twenty twenty four pool. City has advertised for lifeguard concession workers for the twenty twenty four season. As past practice, our pool director hires guards, instructors, concession workers from previous years, many favorable job performances. Additional applications have been interviewed by Director Jake Flynn, Assistant Director Schmitz. Wow, how many is there?
Uh, there's a lot, we had a record amount this year, um, I think this is the first year that we didn't hire, um, everybody who applied. Or close to, sometimes they're just too young, and I think there's probably twelve that we can create some to apply next year, but.
There's a couple of towns around here, you're talking about not opening because they can't get any.
Seventy four.
Seventy four.
That's crazy.
No, that's okay, I.
That's who you hired.
You're hiring seventy four people?
Wow.
We don't screw around here, we give out chickens, chicken permits and we hire people.
Yeah, I should have told my neighbors.
They're all gonna ride around the new dump truck. All right, Councilax requested to approve the above submitted, and to also give pool director Flynn approval to hire additional guards workers as needed to the season.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If that carries. Well, that takes us right into Mayor's staff consult reports. Mayor's report tonight. City would like to send their sympathies to the families of Carol Laut, Shirley Bachan, Bonnie Archer, Dorothy Ferguson, Jeff Lizinski, and Rose Tubin. We'd like to send a big thank you to the Sturfield Area Community Foundation for the fifteen thousand dollar donation that they gave after the toast and taste of the Sturfield Area Food Insecurity Program. Big round of applause to them, Brent. Stewie Cruisers car shows have started up on Friday nights, get out and enjoy them, it's gonna be a good season again. And don't forget, starting tomorrow evening, Wednesday, and then Saturday from eight to noon, four to eight tomorrow, eight to noon, is citywide cleanup days. We offer this to everyone that pays a water bill in this town. Clean it up, otherwise we're gonna come after you and we're gonna have to clean it up and it's gonna cost you. This is a free service to everyone in this community, please take advantage of it. And don't forget, we've got a big one this month, we've got Memorial Day coming right up, Commander Moore and I were just talking today. It's a very, very important day for all of us, too, and I, I would encourage each and every one of you to come and honor our fallen and thank our brothers. It's always a big day, right Jeremiah, you there? We having a parade?
I believe so.
Are we this year again?
I.
I don't think so.
Oh, no, no. Commander hasn't said for sure.
I thought I had heard, but.
Okay.
For sure, for sure, the service don't end with lunch.
Right, he just started the corner, he's marching from there. I was hoping the parade would come back.
Well, you can try and convince him.
All right, try and convince him, yeah. That's all I got. Bill, city administrator's report?
Yep, worked your packet really short tonight, um, but Jake did want me to, uh, Flynn wanted me to let you know that, uh, they're shooting for June tenth. There's a public opening on the pool for another season, they will have some school activities prior to that, as the school year winds down, but, uh, he's already getting things ready to go, cleaned up, waxed, and season ahead, so.
When is the concert park series starts, if you know?
At first week.
When we release the last big daffy this year.
The senior daffy, but I think it's June, February, Wednesday, yep.
All right, Bill, thank you. Any questions for our administrator? Hearing none. Carla, you got a finance director's report for us?
No, just.
Nope.
No, I'll just cut it, just cut, this is as usual.
Hey, that sounds good. Any questions for Carla? All right, thank you. That takes us to Sean, Public Works Director, do you have a report for us?
There is your report in there. One thing that I wanna point out is, uh, we have a radical issue with the front of city hall. And a lot of that issue is, I feel like moisture getting into the figures and the cracks in our building here with some of the mortar. And I don't have top pointing which needs to be done or some, so there's some major issues with this whole front vessel front up here that needs to be taken care of sometime in the future. They did run him wider today.
I don't.
To help me apply for now, but there probably needs to be something built in front of this, some point in the future, complaining for. Other than us, same old same.
Any questions for other vice director? Did you even get time to let them all cool off so far?
No, I just. We have most of the crew here now, we only have one summer kid that won't be started till he's out of high school, when school's open, so all the other college age kids came back, which helps a ton.
Thanks, tell the guys they gotta look and get all ready. No city engineer tonight? No library director? Fire chiefs report?
So.
Assistant fire chief tonight, Josh Bodine, you're on.
Brandon sent it to me, had fourteen fire calls, thirty EMS calls. The department voted to eliminate the S O G for C R P burns, just with time and weather constraints. Um, we talked about possibly maybe helping the city burn, if we want training, to burn out by barricade. Um, the probation members are progressing, able to come to medical calls and fire calls, and then just the A F G grant, they're still working through that. Have about eight thousand applications that they are working.
So my thanks to you guys again for helping my mother last week when you were all out there, I don't know if she offered you cookies this time or not.
She did that day.
I'll get after her.
Yeah, work on that for me.
All right, thanks for the report, any questions for assistant chief? All right, keep it up, Josh. No pool director tonight, so that takes us to committee commission board reports, chamber of commerce. You got the main newsletter in your packet? Whoops, geez. Give me a second, folks, I just screwed up. Sing a song or something, I'm gonna get back on. All right, there we go. New fingers, E D A, H R A, the miss is April sixteenth minute or in, April sixteenth meeting are in there? We'll have another meeting coming up here next week. Finance? I guess we're all good on that.
We're all good right now.
Library? Park board?
I mean, it's rather last month and last night's meeting got canceled due to not enough people to, I have four.
Personnel? Nothing. Plans on it? Nothing. Public safety?
Uh, we're slowly starting to get our summer activities put together, getting emails, all sorts of different things that people want us at, so I'll try to mention those as they come. Um, I just know, just like four different things with the Stewie Cruisers, but as of now, just, uh, May twenty fourth, they've got some ride or parade going on for the graduation.
Yeah.
That's all I know from that. Uh, as some of you might have seen, I've got the speed trailer on Fifth Ave, the new road. As of last Friday, I granted this is a little, it's a little up because of the drive sales, there were, this is just picking up southbound traffic, it's not taking northbound. Just southbound, there were five thousand six hundred eighty one cars driving past it. That was as of like, um, noon today, their average speed is twenty two point four miles an hour. So I also picked up just yesterday and today's, again, as of like noon of today, so all of yesterday and just noon today, southbound traffic, we had two thousand fifty eight cars drive by, average speed of twenty four point one. That's, that speed seems right to me, and people actually speed up to go to that, uh, sign because they might not be looking at their speedometer, but then all of a sudden they see a sign that says they're only going twenty four miles an hour and they're like, I can do one thirty, so they'll speed up, so I'm kind of surprised at that, that, that's not higher. And if, the longer I leave it there, the higher it'll get, just because people match that thirty miles an hour, cause they've got a giant sign saying, yeah. Um, flip it around, so it picks up northbound and then it's gonna leave on Friday to go to America, that's gonna go on, so.
Good, thank you.
So I got.
Thanks for that. Any questions for your officer? Public Works? None, ready?
Um, just had a meeting yesterday, so those minutes will be coming.
Low con?
Um, that's canceled for this month.
Transit advisory committee?
Uh, you will get a big report, uh, at your next meeting, uh, the director is coming in and, um, we've updated the overall operation.
All right. Open mic. Uh, we encourage you to participate. Come on up next year.